Ten seconds would be seven o'clock. I'd like to call the regular council meeting for July twenty-third, twenty-fourth to order. First order business on the agenda is called for community interest is already in the agenda. I don't see anything there in the, in camera parts, so I don't believe anybody has anything. So we'll go on to the next one. The agenda, any additions? Peter Donna?
Thank you, your worship. The public hearing council package that you had separately fits under point five on your agenda. So we'll just add that public hearing agenda on, on five, just a verbage. And under nine, nine point one, regarding public hearing, three readings, two readings consent to go to you now. The third, public hearing, twenty twenty four oh seven bylaw to amend two zero one seven zero two bylaw. All right, thank you.
I just wanted some updates on a few things, Daryl. Should we add that to the agenda? It's stuff that they'll know that I just wanted to find out about, like the boulevard and stuff.
You want to just put it into your report possibly, Ismael? You want to do it that way?
We certainly can. I can, I can speak to those kind of concerns in my council report.
Not a concern, just a question, questions like about the new sign, the boulevard, the community awareness night, and then just the AUMA conference. Those are things I just wanted to.
Yes, we'll just add them into your report if you.
Yeah, I'll make a note. Or you just ask me as we go.
Okay, sounds good.
Um, thank you, worship, due to Mount Cook. We can talk about it in general, but we have to take it off table. You're correct. So we have to add the AUMA conference, your worship, to the, to the agenda to take it off table to discuss it. So we can add that into, uh, old business, seven point three. Okay? Uh, that would be AUMA. Yes, I want you to come off table. If you do that. Not correct? All right, any other additions that everybody has? Not, can I motion to adopt the agenda with those additions?
I'll make the motion to adopt the agenda with the additions.
Thanks, John, all in favor? Uh, it's carried. All right, four point one, the regular meeting minutes there. Are there any errors or omission? Nothing? Can I get a motion to adopt the regular meeting from June the fifteenth? Tracy?
I can make that motion.
You all in favor? That's carried. All right, so we'll get into the public hearing agenda. And first of all, I guess, um, already my part there, John. Are you, anything else that you want to start first?
Um, what I'm going to do, your worship, and then turn it over to Liz Armitage, our planner. And she's going to lead these discussions and guide you through your part. Liz, please go ahead.
Excellent. Um, so we need to start with a motion to open the public hearing, please.
I'll make the motion to open the public hearing.
Thank you, John, all in favor? That's carried. Okay, that done?
All right, the next part is to discuss the purpose of the bylaw. Um, the purpose of the bylaw is an amendment to the land use bylaw. We have to the, to land use bylaw two zero one seven dash zero two. I will give more details when we get to the section called Report for Development Services. So the next point that the mayor needs to request is confirmation of the notice, which I'm happy to give.
Okay, and have you got the confirmation?
I do. So the public hearing was advertised on the town of, the town of Thursby website since July third. Directly adjacent landowners were mailed a hard copy notice on the, for the public hearing on July fourth. Public hearing notices were sent to our, the required government agencies, including CN Railway on July fourth of twenty twenty four for all of these. And then we also placed the public hearing notice in the Connect thirty-nine newspaper on July fifth and July nineteenth edition. So it has had more than the two week required public advertisement.
All right.
So that has been done correctly.
Thank you for that. So then have you got the report from Development Services?
I do. So in the package, you will see that there is a report for the whole item. And so I'm going to go through that, give you an overview. Um, we have essentially an application. The property is currently designated commercial, highway commercial C two. Um, you will see that there is a map in the agenda and I, or I do want to say that the map is not quite accurate. The area that is being proposed to have this subdivision is reflected on the bylaw page and it's a bit smaller. So the building that was recently built is not part of the land use bylaw amendment, just the portion that would be subdivided out and creating a new lot. So the property is, um, currently C two, so the land designated to the northeast and west, um, are C two and C one to the south. The north is not correct. It's not C two to the north. It's, um, railway and then I believe it's residential on the north side. So we've had multiple discussions with the potential purchaser of these lands with permission of the landowner. And ultimately, the applicant is looking to do something very unique. And through discussions with our legal counsel, we, we recommend that counsel consider a direct control land use designation. And the reason for that is that when it comes to unique developments, direct control is a great tool to assure that we do the due diligence and that counsel is involved in that process. Again, to make sure that due diligence is done. So the reason that this is so unique is multiple reasons. The first is that the railway is right there. All development in close proximity to the railway needs to comply with guidelines for new developments in proximity to railway operations. However, the challenge with railways is we don't often have great communication from the rail lines on what they require. And we understand this line may be decommissioned, but we also understand that it has not been decommissioned yet. So we have to treat it as a fully active line, which makes things difficult. And so we have reached out multiple times and we have not been able to get confirmation about when they plan to decommission it. So again, we have to treat it as an active rail line. The other part of this is that the applicant is looking to combine residential, greenhouse use, and a small manufacturing use on the property. So it's, it's very difficult to have those three uses on one property. Not impossible, and that's the point of this, this district. So we ultimately did circulate the notice to the agencies as discussed. Um, and we did get a response from Alberta Health Services, which has requested a phase one environmental site assessment. Now, we can't condition a land use bylaw on that. So we are, later in the agenda, you will see a subdivision, which we have put that condition into the subdivision as a component of that. And that, because of the unique nature of this property, is something that administration fully supports. Um, and so ultimately, yes, it should be done. And it is important at this point to note that if counsel chooses to proceed with the land use bylaw amendment, the subdivision that is in the agenda is also recommended to proceed. We wouldn't really want one to proceed without the other. They typically go hand in hand and we don't like to have two, two uses on one property. So ultimately, we recommend that counsel approve both this and the subdivision, which we'll go over later tonight, and that the applicant will still be responsible for the development permit and building permit. And as a direct control district, the town council will be responsible for reviewing and approving issue and issuing future development permits. Of course, administration will review that and provide you with recommendations. So tonight, we, um, we recommend that you obviously continue with the public hearing process and then pass first, second, and third.
All right, thank you for that.
The next item is the written submissions, which I have discussed. We did receive one from Alberta Health Services, which you should have a copy of.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, so then the next thing is, I guess, persons wishing to be heard. So I ask for the first time if there are any persons wishing to be heard. Having heard none, I will ask for the second time if there are any other persons wishing to be heard. I will ask for the third time, are there any other persons wishing to be heard? Having heard none, I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing for bylaw twenty twenty four oh seven.
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing for bylaw twenty twenty four oh seven.
Thank you, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. So that's all we need for now, Liz, and then we'll get to the bylaw later, or?
Your worship, please.
Um, I believe, I believe we were going to do first, second, and third under the next section, if I'm not mistaken. We were going to move section nine up to be a second to section five.
Oh, yep, that's, that's my, that's my fault, your worship. I apologize. Uh, yeah, point nine, the bylaws of policies, we'll move that underneath the public hearing.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to go on the right page here. Third, if you could adjust that, thank you. Look at it as, uh, five point two. Thanks, Liz.
So administration does recommend, um, that you guys pass first, second, and third, knowing that the uniqueness of this parcel being adjacent to the rail line will be thoroughly reviewed through development permits. Um, and what you will see in the actual bylaw page that was included in the public hearing, you'll see the title, the direct control rules, and you'll see in those rules that a lot of them state, um, as determined by counsel. And that is exactly what we need, because we need to evaluate this parcel as a, um, unique development. And so you will see on the last page, schedule A, that lot ten, block one, that would be applied to this rezoning area. So the parcel that is currently, has the building on it built by grants is not part of the rezoning. It is just this new parcel that would be created through the subdivision that you'll hear later tonight. And I, as administration, have nothing more to add. While you consider first, second, and third.
All right, thank you. Is everybody with me on this so far?
Yep.
All right, thanks. Okay, can I get a, uh, motion for the first reading of bylaw two thousand twenty four, the amendment to the land use bylaw?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, John, all in favor? It's carried. Can I get a second motion to bylaw twenty twenty four?
I'll make that motion.
You all in favor? And then I guess I'll need a motion that we can do the certain final.
Yeah, that is good, thank you, worship.
Yeah, so you want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion, depending on consent.
John, all in favor? Okay, and then we need the third and final motion for bylaw twenty twenty four oh seven.
I can make.
You all in favor? Carry. I think we did it. You're good with that, Liz?
Yep, um, and I will just hold on the line until you get to seven point one.
All right, thanks, Liz. I mean, your worship, we do have a final amendment, land use bylaw for direct control district. Okay, you're good with that, Grant?
Yes, okay, thank you very much.
All right. Okay, thank you. Uh, moving on then to, uh, presentation, six point one, the water bill, April McDonald, I see it here. So I guess the first thing I need is a motion to take that off the table. Is that correct, Ismael?
That is correct, your worship. Do you have to have a motion to lift this delegation from table, please?
I'll make a motion to lift this delegation from table.
Thank you, all in favor? Carry. All right, so I'll, um, turn it over to you, April, if you want to step forward.
Daryl, do we need to adjourn that public hearing?
Sorry.
Do we need to adjourn that?
No, it's all part of the, it's all part of the regular meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, you do actually need to adjourn public hearing. You do need to, um, close public hearing. My apologies if that wasn't done. You do need to have a motion that closes public hearing.
It was, we.
Yes, we did close.
I made a motion to close public hearing.
Sorry, my apologies.
Quinn Warner, Quinn Warner stood down, your worship. Thank you.
Okay, all right, we got it. Okay, sorry about that, April, please go ahead.
Uh, I apologize because I don't know what you guys have in front of you in regards to this. Uh, I don't have an agenda, so I don't know.
That's fine.
But I assume that everybody has read my letter to the council.
We have.
My name is April McDonald. I am the sole owner of two four four five four oh five Alberta LTD. Never in a million years do I think I'd be up against a town council over basic contract law. I own more than one company in each province and we all have to abide by the same rules. Um, and laws without a contract and my signature, you cannot provide a service. And it states in your bylaws that I was provided from your town in two point B that I have to make an application for water services. I have never made an application, um, because I have not yet done so. The house is in a dilapidated state. And as an investor, I would have thought that the town would have prioritized having someone come in and clean up dilapidated properties rather than nitpick them over something that they clearly are in the wrong for. Um, I haven't asked for these services and are not at, yet at a stage that it can be done. Public Works has come and inspected the meter for the water to inform me that it is cracked and broken. The water services couldn't even be turned on if I requested some. Now, I do expect within a month or so, I can ask for services to be turned on, but to be penalized during this time that I've owned the property, but before anything was actually connected or actually has made, or anything has been actually connected or run, has actually made me reconsider investing in your town again. As per your direction of your CAO, I am to come here and beg you to follow contract law of Alberta, to not charge me during the construction phase, and to wait for me to apply for the home to be in a state that it can receive your services. I haven't had a very good relationship with your town as of yet. Um, my tax rule notice was sent out to the wrong owner, even though I've been able to be billed since April. Um, but apparently your tax assessment notices went out on March fourteenth and when the town received my title, did not send me the choice or the ability to even dispute my property tax notice. When I received my notice, I sent it in and said, hey, how do I, how do I dispute this? And they said, no, you're, you're way past that. This is the bill. I know that they've had my address since the April billing cycle, uh, because that's when I started to be billed for services that I have not yet contracted myself into.
Okay. Sandy, you want to respond to this? Have you been?
Um, yeah, we were dealing with it. Um, it is, every municipality charges water from the minute because the services are available. Um, we talked to Devon.
We do four birds, Calmar, Devon. We do four birds coming to us.
Yeah, so four, they all do the same thing. They all charge them the date of possession.
Should you read?
Oh, bring me to. Um, we, uh, we know that Liz McDonald has used our garbage service, which is on the bill. She participated in a large garbage pickup. Um, and water, and the bylaw does say everybody gets a minimum bill regardless of, of whether the water's on or off or from the minute you take possession, because the services are available, so.
I'd like to know where it states that in the bylaw, sorry? Because when I came and I had it highlighted, it says that in two point B, making an application for water services in all cases prior to the water being turned on.
That, I think, when you're building. Schedule A reads as follows. The following water service charges shall be levied and collected for front billing, all persons, businesses, churches, clubs, and charitable organizations, government, communities, et cetera, connected to the town of Thursby water system in the schedule cubic meters or expressed in meters, cubic gallons, or quarters of gallons. Unless applicable rates, the following service charges shall be levied and collected for billing, all persons, businesses, churches, government, connected to the town of Thursby water. So since she is connected to the system, she is charged.
May I rebut that? So your appendix A doesn't apply if two point B is met.
Two point B is for when you're connecting to the system.
It says to make, it doesn't say a turn on. It says you have to make an application. So I've taken this to my legal counsel and they said, if you have to interpret it, it is not written in a way it can be enforced. It clearly states making an application for water services, but in all cases, prior to the water being turned on. That's written in your bylaw. Appendix A cannot supersede two point B.
Our legal opinion, the legal opinion from our legal, is the law of service, that per grievance with the prior owners, um, her company purchased a service lot. Utility connections are infrastructure located on or under the parcel of land. There are base rates for having these services available to the parcel. The property is receiving the benefit of having services available to it, even if those services are not actively being used and those amounts are properly due or owing under the municipal government act, the bylaws, and equitable legal principles.
So. I have, I, I don't understand how you've checked with Calmar, because I checked with Calmar. I live in Calmar. I've checked with the county of Locom because I own in Mir. I own in Wataasman. I own in four other provinces, in four other towns, and this has never.
I spoke with Heather.
Ever.
I spoke with you. I spoke with Heather and she does the exact same thing. So in Calmar.
Uh, well, I took it to them and asked them, would this be the same? And they said, no.
She told me that.
I have a copy of Locom counties, how they have it written in their bylaws in order to be able to enforce it just the same. And told me that without an application with my signature on it, it can never go over. Just the same as if I made a contract with anyone to do a service and I try and take them to small claims court in order to make them pay me, unless I have a copy of their signature on a contract, it cannot be enforced in the province of Alberta. My company has never signed with the town of Thursby. My problem is, is we're wasting time over a three hundred dollar bill.
Which has been paid.
My mom came and paid that bill.
Okay. So going, okay, well, let me ask you this question. Going forward, like, I mean, if, if, if it, like, say, say, you're saying your, the meter is not even functionable?
No.
You're not ready for water? So having given notice, uh, can they terminate their, their water services and just receive the rest?
Like, I, I understand that she said I've used garbage. I used the big garbage pickup because that was posted in your town thing. It doesn't say that that's part of your whole thing. It just said, and the neighbor put out my garbage with the garbage that didn't get collected and I didn't know about that. The rest has been hauled to Sunnybrook. I've paid to haul it all away because I can't get a bin because there's not enough room and everything else. So I've been doing it one load at a time. Um, so the garbage service was used for one week right after your big one because I didn't know that they didn't take it. It wasn't that it was a malicious use of it.
Andrew is on, uh, on the meeting, so if he can just, we can unmute him. He can comment as to whether he, because he didn't mention to me that the meter was not.
Good. Hello. Andrew.
Yeah, sorry, sorry about that. I, I missed part of this because my, uh, my computer decided I need to download, so now I'm on my phone.
Okay, so, so, go ahead. I know, I understand that that, uh, water meter is not functionable.
No, that water meter, uh, is not functionable.
Okay. So I guess, does this change the?
Well, I mean, whether water's on or not for anybody in this town, they'll pay a minimum of six Qs. That's what the bylaw states, separate minimum charge, to be connected to the system.
Right. So we're just, April, we're just, we're discussing, we're just giving the water. We're not sparring the rest, or are you?
No, it's the, it's the whole thing. I mean, it's, I have sewer, I have water, I have, sorry, garbage.
Yep. Yeah, the infrastructure fee and then we said all that stuff.
A garbage collection, a blue bag recycling, uh, residential water, residential sewer, an infrastructure fee and a sewer infrastructure fee. That's what's listed on each bill.
Yeah, so that's minimum charges for, for anybody connected.
So it's a hundred and eleven dollars a month.
Nine seven ninety-five, like, to the town people.
Right.
Oh, the very, sorry, the very first one was a hundred and eleven dollars.
Because it was longer than thirty days.
Right. Go ahead and answer.
Interpretation might be a problem, but I know I've dealt personally with three different properties in three different municipalities where, when I was naive to not understand how the billings worked, that I did ask, you know, can the water be turned off? And I received no more bill because nobody is living there. And I was hopeful of no bill as well. And they said, no, unless the place is decommissioned, there will be the basic bill. And like I say, at three different times, when I've asked for something to be removed, they said, we'd have to take it. Uh, like even the power lines, that they would have to come in and take out the poles, take out the wires, decommission that entirely to get a zero bill. Otherwise, there's always the basic bill. And so I'm referencing water, I'm referencing electricity. It's, it comes with the property, a basic bill, when the utilities are there.
And, and I'm sure, like, City Edmonton, I mean, every time that somebody changes their house, I'm sure it's the same thing. They don't cut the water off and turn it on.
And if it's a livable property, this is never a problem.
Right.
It's just the fact that this is a dilapidated property. There's literally a hole in the wall.
But nobody's ever decommissioned it.
Um, I, I don't know that for a fact because I know that they were, all services were shut off and, and shut down when I purchased the property.
So he must.
So I assume they were decommissioned because I've had to pay exorbitant amounts to Epcor and everyone else to have everything turned back on. So there was a reconnect, so that from decommissioned to reconnect, I've had to pay each one of those providers.
They were probably, they were probably disconnected, just like ours, due to non-payment.
Okay, so we're, like, prior to April acquiring the property, were these bills being paid?
Uh, they were paid upon, at the end, but right before it was sold, they were paid.
So he, and that wasn't you?
No, there was nothing on, there was notices of disconnect or all over the doors when I purchased the property. It was one hundred percent sold, as is where is no water, no heat, no nothing. And everything was disconnected, as per the notices on the door.
But he, the previous owner, knew that and he paid it prior to you buying that place.
Yeah, and we put the reconnect fee on there.
So he paid them right up to the last, to the date, well, whatever the day you took, took ownership.
Possession, yeah. Yes, that, because my lawyer, I told her to make sure.
Yeah, the infrastructure fee, and then we said all that stuff.
A garbage collection, a blue bag recycling, residential water, residential sewer, an infrastructure fee, and a sewer infrastructure fee. That's what's listed on each bill.
Yeah, so that's minimum charges for, just anybody connected.
So it's $111 a month.
Nine seven ninety-five, like, to the town people.
Oh, the very, sorry, the very first one was $111.
Because it was longer than thirty days.
Right. Go ahead and answer.
Interpretation might be a problem, but I know I've dealt personally with three different properties in three different municipalities, where, when I was naive to not understand how the billing was worked, that I did ask, you know, can the water be turned off? And I received no more bill, because nobody is living there, and I was hopeful of no bill as well. And they said, no, unless the place is decommissioned, there will be the basic bill. And like I say, at three different times, when I've asked for something to be removed, they said we'd have to take it. Like even the power lines, that they would have to come in and take out the poles, take out the wires, decommission that entirely to get a zero bill. Otherwise, there's always the basic bill. And so I'm referencing water, I'm referencing electricity. It comes with the property, a basic bill, when the utilities are there.
And I'm sure, like, City Edmonton, I mean, every time that somebody changes their house, I'm sure it's the same thing. They don't cut the water off and turn it on.
And if it's a livable property, this is never a problem.
Right.
It's just the fact that this is a dilapidated property. There's literally a hole in the wall.
But nobody's ever decommissioned it.
I don't know that for a fact, because I know that they were, all services were shut off and shut down when I purchased the property.
So he must know.
So I assume they were decommissioned, because I've had to pay exorbitance amounts to Epcor and everyone else to have everything turned back on. So there was a reconnect, so that from decommissioned to reconnect, I've had to pay each one of those providers.
They were probably, they were probably disconnected, just like ours, due to non-payment.
Okay, so we're, like, prior to April acquiring the property, were these bills being paid?
They were paid upon, at the end, but right before it was sold, they were paid.
So he, and that wasn't you?
No, there was nothing on, there was notices of disconnect or all over the doors when I purchased the property. It was 100% sold, as is where is, no water, no heat, no nothing, and everything was disconnected, as per the notices on the door.
But he, the previous owner, knew that, and he paid it prior to you buying that place.
Yeah, and we put the reconnect fee on there.
So he paid them right up to the last, to the date, well, whatever the day you took, took ownership.
Possession, yeah. Yes, that, because my lawyer, I told her to make sure, because I saw on the doors the notices, to make sure that the town is paid up when I take possession, so that the business comes back.
He knew what was going on, and that's why he couldn't sell the property without it, obviously.
Obviously.
But he didn't, he didn't contest the water bills from us or anything.
No, we don't know.
We had no, nobody told us that it was not functional, that it was.
No, because we turned it off for non-payment.
And I would assume that Public Works would put a priority on putting in a new, new, wouldn't they?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I guess we can go around and around and around in here. What are you looking for, from us?
You just have a motion whether or not you want to go with your bill or have our payment.
Okay, does anybody want to make a motion to that effect?
So then, what, moving forward, we look at shutting off services or getting, not shutting off, like, they're still going to be responsible for the bill moving forward? Knowing these are the minimum fees that'll be happening, because there's services to the house? Or are you going to come back a month, and I'll be like, still not done yet, I don't want to change it all?
No, if you want to set a date as of, okay, so your billing is obviously the end of the month. If you want to start for till August 1st, that's fine, because by August 1st, I can have it to a stage where they can, Public Works can even come in and replace the water meter. That's fine. It's just that when it was purchased, it was, it was cold, it was the middle of everything, and there's absolutely, it wasn't the heat, wasn't electricity, wasn't anything. I couldn't, even if you had water, it would have just froze off like it did. I mean, when I bought it, there's, the pipes have frozen, split, things like that. So it's just a matter of getting it back to that. So if you want to make an agreement that we go for August 1st and the bills go forward, no problem. That I have no troubles with.
Did the realtor sell it as a decommissioned property?
It was sold as is where is. That was on the listing, that was everything. Every representation, everything was taken out of our real estate contract. It was sold as is where is, exactly as if it was at foreclosure, which would have meant it was decommissioned. So if he paid the reconnect fee right before I took possession, that was graceful of him, but until I can get it to a place where it can be reconnected, that was mute.
I don't know that we knew it wasn't. Right, like, we, like I said, we disconnected it for non-payment, so it's not.
Your worship, we have to have a legal opinion on decommission, please. We're not prepared to comment on that, whether this property was decommissioned or not.
I don't.
Okay, so that's what you'd like to see? Is that what you'd like to see, April, so?
I would just like to see that the bill be erased until August 1st. On August 1st, I would.
I think, I think what you're, what you're saying, Donna, is that we're going to just put it off to the next meeting until we get a legal opinion on it?
That is correct, your worship. I'm not going to satisfy this delegation until we have that decommissioning answer in full, please.
So Cindy, just a question. So on this property, the prior owner was being billed up until March 28th, until, and you knew that he was being billed up to that point?
No, no, when I viewed the property, there were notices for disconnect that dated January 30th on the door. That property had no services whatsoever. They were disconnected.
But disconnection of service doesn't mean no bill.
It could have been disconnected in February, and the tag's still hung there.
And, I mean, even if it, oh, we've disconnected people before, they've had no water, and they have.
In a case like that, they have to pay everything up and before they get reconnected.
Never have we not. As soon as somebody takes possession of a house, we put a notice on the door.
Yeah.
If we don't get a thing, when they get the land title, we put the bill in their name.
I understand that, yeah.
That's just the rate is.
Okay, well, I think we've heard both sides, and we will get a legal opinion, as CEO Donna says, and we will let you know. So, came with you? Somebody want to make a motion to that effect? All favor? Thank you, thanks for coming in, April. You can see that, you know.
Decommissioned or not, I don't understand why that matters. The question is, is I, are we told to come and say?
Yeah, well.
And so I'm here begging, I don't understand why it hinges on a definition of whether it's pre-decommissioned, when there was no services turned on when I purchased it.
Okay, well, we will get a legal opinion, and we'll get back to you as soon as we can. Thank you very much for coming in. All right, moving on to the next item. Hey, Chamber of Commerce, 6.2, I see, Carrie, you're here. Would you like to give us a view of what's going on?
Thank you, sure. Are you sure? Okay. I would ask to come today, I guess, first and foremost, to see if the council had any questions based on the package that we provided, and answer any questions they're concerned about. Would you like me to go through a rundown of what's happening?
Yeah, I think, well, I guess, I guess what we need from you, what do you want from us? Because you're looking for, we have not seen a formal request to close the street, do any of that stuff.
Oh, that was an email.
Is that, am I correct, seeing that, CEO Donna?
It's in here.
I know it's in here, but I mean, that's.
Yeah, there, in this letter, it is, like permission to close down Main Street before 4950th Avenue. One of the things I responded back to the chamber was I wanted to make sure that the drugstore and the businesses that were going to be open that day were fine with it. I was more concerned about the drugstore with respect to seniors, people with infirmities, etc., may not be able to get in. Chamber indicated to me that it went around and got a list of signatures, to which I witnessed. Thank you for that, very routine. The drugstore had no problem. Our CPO, Mr. Zepc, went and double-checked all these barricades, and is this the one that he has approved, Carrie? Because I see some barricades. Yeah, I think this is. We had, he had, yeah, we had some, he had some issues with, we were blocking off alleys, and people couldn't get to their homes, so he went and.
Adjusted.
Adjusted, that's been adjusted. We're satisfied with the barricade situation. We're satisfied with the businesses wanting the street to be, their files of street to be closed. I know he talked to your team about the drunk tank and the beer gardens, that had to be separated too.
Yeah, no, the drunk tank. I mean, it might be, but it's not going to be at our choice.
I need a beer. The drunk tank, oh my goodness. So that was all been separated?
Separated, yeah.
And your beer gardens is more formally on the pavement.
Correct.
On the, I believe we've, we've dealt with that. So we're satisfied with this map. It just means that Manager Kiraly and I have to issue the road closure property decree, and that's, we're prepared to do that. And you've attached the community grant, oh, we'll just go, can we go through?
One thing at a time.
Yeah, let's go with it at a time, okay. So go ahead, Carrie, you have those.
So in part of the spirit of Thorsey, that was basically all that we had to cover. We will be getting the appropriate, you know, liquor license, as we always do, for the beer gardens.
You have Proserve for choice?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that.
Everyone that works in there has to have Proserve, so.
And Protek?
Protek.
Protek of the security. Protek, yeah, for security.
Yeah, I'll find out.
Yeah, we, we asked for that. Our community PS officer has over liquor and gaming control and cannabis act on his appointment, so he is technically a liquor inspector. There you go.
I'll take that change. Anyway. So Protek, is that everyone or somebody on site while it's?
Who do the security.
Okay.
Because you'll need security, right?
Yeah, it's just a certification that somebody, like, Proster or, yeah, same as serving alcohol, that we get the Proster.
Fair enough.
Carrie, is the beer tent going to be all three days, the Friday, Saturday?
No, so the only thing that's all three days is the fair. The spirit of Thorsey is just on Saturday, and runs from, we've changed the time twice now, 4 till 8. 4 till 8 p.m. with the ceremony and statue reveal.
So that's just when the beer tent is, is?
No, the beer tent can be open up until, I believe it was midnight. But it will not be open on Friday or Sunday, just Saturday.
So you have, yeah, liquor licenses encompasses midnight, and last calls at 11?
I believe so, I'll just verify that and send to you.
You bet. You sure you don't want to fix it?
No, I'm.
An hour, five minutes. And then everybody's serving, it doesn't drink, right?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
So I'll get, make sure that there's a response, since I've got the liquor license.
Yeah, yeah, please send it to us in writing, that we can get the answer to the file.
So then you just, you really just made a motion for the $500, Donna?
Just double-checking here, your worship, I've read this quite a few times, just want to make sure we have the grant application, but that's, that's next. Carrie, please talk about point five. I'm not, I'm not, I can't speak to it properly, I'm not sure what you mean about the time capsule and so forth.
Okay, so one of the things that was thought, might be a neat addition, is that within the statue, there would be a plate that can be removed, and a little time capsule put in, to be opened in, I think it's 2099, another 75 years. We would just ask that the town put a little something in there, be it. I believe it's, I will confirm, but I think it was about this date, wasn't it?
I haven't seen or heard of a cap on that.
I'll get this out.
Your worship, was there not a time capsule put in when?
Nathan. That was the only thing that wasn't.
Maybe did something like that, like the path ring or something.
Like an official thing, though, it was just a Nathan thing, I think.
Yeah, we didn't see anything official when we were in there.
It's under the ground, I think.
Oh.
May I ask, because this is, I'm requesting respectfully, that because this is another.
Addition.
Addition, and another group of people started Taylor Park, if you'd be so kind as to discuss with him that you're putting a time capsule there. I'm not saying he has to give permission, I'm just saying it could.
Have a, yeah, okay.
Have a conversation with him.
Yeah, I feel like there was a time cap.
I thought it was another. Yeah, I don't remember seeing anything. I don't know where he applied it officially.
I don't know if that he speaks to, did he speak to?
Directly, I think, yeah.
Because I think, I heard it was in the cement sidewalk, I'm not sure. We could dig it up if there's money in it, but.
Yes, I'll have to be, because it would destroy something, right? But I'll check with them, I know. Maybe something that wasn't thought of at the time, but yeah, I will ask.
I appreciate that.
And then also ours, what's this?
Yeah.
Just so you know, what to put in there, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
And I think.
I haven't been by there lately, what's going on?
Next, well, they're just still working on the, maybe try to cool off a bit.
Oh.
Yeah, but Christopher's supposed to come back and finish the landscaping, so.
And the grass getting laid?
That's part of the grass, yeah, it'll all be done before then.
No, yeah, just, just, you know, formally, council, we need a, a requ, or we need a, we chat.
Recommendation?
We made a recommendation, we supplied a lot of your landscape immediately, he just has to give us some recommend, some time, and then we can, he's got his dump trailer there.
Okay.
We can take our loader, and we know where the loan is, I mean, there's no charge, it's like 300 loads there, if he can take all 300, we'd appreciate it.
I did mention that clearly, well, oh, Sean.
Okay, so then, you just have to give us enough time, if he needs it, and he brings his dump trailer, and then he can help.
And he doesn't necessarily, just to be really clear, have to use all of that within Taylor Park? Is it free for the taking?
No.
Okay, next one.
Taylor Park.
Really clear about that.
Taylor Park.
I bet Carrie might need some.
He has as much as he wants for Taylor Park. Build a mountain if he wants.
I just don't want any misunderstandings.
No, no, this is a great question, no.
I think there was an email about that between.
Yeah, yeah, I just, it's just for council's understanding. And I don't have any other questions.
The other thing is that I've made arrangements to have two outhouses put at Taylor Park for the day, so that there's facilities, as well as, I'm taking care of all the outhouses for the fair and the sleeping grounds for them, so.
All right, no permit needed?
No, I just, just in case somebody asks, is there going to be, there will be two outhouses there.
Okay, okay. And regarding, regarding your, sorry, sorry.
She asked me about that too, and I don't, I don't know, because legally, it's enough with just the handstand, touch of the gross. I just have to see a cost.
You have a beer gardens there, a outhouse will be snooping around.
So where is the, sorry, I don't know if I've read this anywhere, where is the fair and the beer gardens? Is that all being held over in the rec center area?
No, not at all, actually. So the beer gardens is going to be in the parking lot at drugstore.
Okay.
Okay, with a stage, and that's where the outhouses will be. So that's Monday, that's just Saturday. The fair is happening basically where Loan Wolf holds the car show. So I've asked him to make sure that when the car show is done, we have like two weeks, please don't put anything back there, because he was the one that said, go here. And that's where the other six outhouses will go. And I did ask for a wash station there. And the water situation, they do only need a hose, they don't actually need, like, access to a hose, they don't need a whole trailer.
I don't have a hose.
Nope, that's fine, I, because I might have made some arrangements, I already talked to George. I haven't taken possession of the storage unit yet.
Yeah.
Because I'm closest to that, so.
Yeah, fair enough.
If not, to run it to the first tenant unit, and I just got a little short enough so that he can make those arrangements.
Yeah.
So. I didn't want it across the street, so.
No, we don't need it, actually, because you wouldn't have. Yeah, you're going to do the tree.
I mean, it's not going to come, it's just like, yeah.
We'll look for the tanks, we'll put it there. Okay, now that's up.
Any other questions from, I just, as regarding the ceremony, there, I would, I'm sure that the council, anybody can attend, as far as myself. If you want me to give a little short speech, I'd be happy to do so.
That'd be great.
Yeah, are you going to get the dunk tank?
Or the drunk tank?
The drunk, the drunk.
You don't want after the dunk tank, maybe, and after the.
By the way, you can charge them extra.
Well, yeah.
Our CPO.
I would think maybe even more for past mares, but I don't know, I'm not.
Our CPO will be participating in the drunk tanking, you know.
I'll see if I can get one of those old style swimming suits, you know, covering you from your ankles to your neck.
Oh, okay. I'm also working on the floor as well.
All right, anything else, anybody? As far as the, as far as the carnival, I mean, that's obviously between you, Chamber, and whoever's got that property, right?
Yeah. And I think the question hasn't asked once before, they're looking for, is it actually going to the farm center? Our big swap approved that for us to put, because they need to be separate, so they can sleep in the weird hours. So if anybody asks, then there'll be two outhouses placed there as well.
Anything else?
Nicely found out.
I think, no, just for, we're happy.
Can I get a motion for the application for their grant for the.
I'll make the one.
You got it, all favor? Sorry?
That is a separate information.
Separate?
They just asked for it, they just asked for it as part of the email.
It's in eight point three, your worship.
Yeah, okay.
Where is it?
Eight point three, before.
For your worship.
Oh, I thought. We will accept that for the RST for information. Okay?
Absolutely, they are actually, so they are asking for a couple things, other than the grant. They were asking for permission to close down Main Street, and then they're asking for, sorry, let me make sure I get the writing correct, to make some type of proclamation to open the time capsule in another 75 years, which would be the year 2099. So those are two, are the optional things, but.
Yeah, the administration can, can close the street, your worship, because now that we have an understanding through the MGA, we have that power to do so, Mr. Kiraly and I, so we can close the street.
Do you want a motion for those?
Please.
Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, see, all in favor? Okay, then we'll go back to eight point three. Sorry about that.
I'll make motion for time capsule, we open in 2099.
Okay, I thought we'd make them both at the same time, all right? All favor, Carrie?
And is that something you'd be willing to do as part of your speech?
Yeah.
Okay. We can work that out.
Let me know what you, are they agenda there, and what's up there?
No getting in the dunk tank.
Ma'am.
You want to go to the dunk tank?
I've already set up, we said, the Starfield Peace Detachment in the trunk. One thing at a time.
Okay, okay.
Lobby there. Okay.
Thank you, you're welcome to hang around.
You're welcome here, all around.
I don't need, sorry, if there's any questions, okay. The other question, sorry, I did see on there as a question mark, so I just wanted to verify that nothing needs to be done with it, but that we are looking for a not-for-profit group to run the hot dog stand in the gazebo as well.
Step down a length.
Yeah.
For health.
But from the town standpoint. But from the town standpoint.
Well, they have a number of health licenses.
Yeah, okay.
And they're nonprofit, I'll, I'll waive the business license, so.
Okay, perfect, we got the school, so we're just waiting to hear the offer then.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Cause we don't want anything from that, thank you.
Yeah, for sure, it'd be great if you had, no, we can, not a problem.
It's good to have.
Yeah, anything else?
Sounds good, um, just a quick question, I'll just, I'll put the water at that property.
What's the property?
The one that I'm looking to purchase, is that on currently?
Uh, we can answer that question.
Okay, so.
Can I check the files?
Okay, sounds good.
Email me or just phone me, Carrie.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
We're actually coming in, Carrie.
Thank you, Carrie.
Okay, I think we're done with that, seven point one, the subdivision application there, is that?
Yes, Your Worship, I'm turning this over to Liz, and, uh, Liz, uh, would, if you would please become so kind as to take the floor on behalf of the administration, please.
Absolutely, um, tonight, the second one that I'm presenting, which goes hand in hand with the land use bylaw amendment, is the subdivision. Um, GNN Development, uh, applied for the subdivision for part of Lot A, Block One on 50th Avenue. You'll see the image here that is in the report, shows the entire original property approximately, that will be subdivided. Um, the application was submitted on May 21st, and the fees are received, and so the subdivision is in compliance with the setbacks outlined in the land use bylaw and the guidelines for new development in proximity to railway operations. However, at this time, we cannot determine with 100% certainty if the future potential development on the site will be compliant with these guidelines. And the reason for that is that we have not received a formal development permit application that we can process, because until the land use bylaw amendment was done, we didn't know for sure what would happen here, so that work will, will begin once the subdivision has been approved by council and endorsement is completed by the applicant. Ultimately, um, that development permit will be brought back to council, as mentioned earlier tonight, um, and again, as mentioned earlier tonight, the town has attempted to reach out to the railway operative, operator on multiple occasions, and we still do not have anything in writing that confirms that the rail line is, is decommissioned. So at this time, we attweet, the rail line is being active, um, we did send out the notice of the subdivision, and, um, the subdivision does not follow a bylaw approval process, it requires that council pass a motion, um, so what you'll see here, under recommendation, is what needs to be in the motion, it'll be quite a long motion, um, and I'll go through each one of these, so council makes a motion to, for the approval of subdivision file sub dash 24 dash 01, contingent on the filing list, following list of conditions. First is that the subdivision plan be registered at land titles, um, or that the subdivision plan be surveyed and then submitted to the town for endorsement. Outstanding property taxes on a parcel must be paid in full, we ensure all right of ways are carried forward and registered on the newly created lot, four, the endorsement fee must be paid at the time of endorsement, five, the lot is smaller than 0.8 hectares, so there is no municipal reserve owing, six, the applicant must submit grading plans prepared by a qualified professional to the satisfaction of the development authority, grading must be completed in accordance with the grading plan prior to endorsement, seven, exacting clause for site servicing plans, and that the site servicing must be installed prior to endorsement, and so this is that if there are not water lines and sanitary lines, um, and power and all of those things to the site, they must be put to the site prior to endorsement. As well, given the comment we received from Alberta Health Services, the phase one envi- site, environmental site assessment, um, is a condition here as well, prior to endorsement. Make necessary changes to the gas, gas utility, altigas utility, and provide services to the lots, um, and any easements required, make arrangements with power, utility, and fortis to service the lots and provide the easement, and then ultimately, they may be required to enter into a development agreement on te- on terms that are satisfaction of the town authority, and this would, um, be for the provision of those services and, um, potentially payment of full security. And so this is different than what I understand was done in the town authority prior to this council, and Ms. Tona as CIO, and myself is the land use planner. These conditions are really quite standard in a subdivision, and, and the purpose for them, while they do take some time and effort on behalf of, behalf of the landowner, is to ensure that the lot that is created and ultimately endorsed and therefore created is completely serviced. If the town doesn't do these things at this point in time, you will create a situation that has caused us numerous problems on a different property in town, um, because the landlords, the people who had that land were not experienced in this side of development, and so it is standard practice that these things occur at, prior to endorsement, or at the time and prior to settlement lot. So ultimately, um, we would recommend that a motion be passed if council chooses to approve this with all of these conditions contained within that motion. And I am here to answer any questions, if there are any.
Anybody have any questions? All right, so, um, the motion, I'm not gonna repeat all the things you said there, so I just, uh, looking, okay, yeah, everything. So I'll be looking for a motion from council here to, uh, approve the subdivision application, as per all the conditions on my list here.
Um, make the motion.
Thank you, all in favor? That's Carrie, okay.
Excellent, so the next step in this is that the subdivision has, just as a piece of information, the subdivision has to go through all the requirements that are outlined here in order to get endorsement, um, and that is the responsibility of the applicant, submit the, the materials that we need. Then, once the subdivision exists, exists, the, um, development permit will be reviewed in compliance for the new lot, um, and then that development permit will come back to council, because it is a direct control district, we of course will make a recommendation and review everything to help council out, but you guys will see the development permit before anything can happen.
All right, in that direct control district, Liz?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
And the direct control district, again, is only on a new parcel being created, it is not on grants existing parcels, that he would change at the end of this, with that new building that was built on it.
This is for the two new lots, what's that control?
Yeah.
All right.
Uh, round, do you have any questions at all?
I don't, no, I, it sounds, sounds all very good, thank you.
Okay, and I guess then we're, uh, we're done for that part.
I think if you don't need me anymore, I will exit the call, and thank you very much for this wonderful meeting tonight.
Okay, well, thank you for, for your input.
Thanks Liz, for all your hard work, much appreciated.
Have a great one.
Thank you, Liz.
Right.
Bye.
All right, one last thing, I guess, uh. You don't have to stay grounded, but.
No, I, it's fine.
Uh, seven point two is GNN Developments tax incentive. If you want to.
Yes, Your Worship and Council, yes, uh, GNN Developments qualifies for this, cause they built a new building, and, um, um, this will be the, the existing building that's built. Liz, that was up, yes.
I just pointed where to react to, it was tabled at the last meeting, so you have to motion.
You are right, and I have it right here, yes, can we have a motion to come off table to discuss, please, Your Worship and Council.
So I make the motion to pull off the table?
Thank you, all in favor?
Thank you. I should be my own writing, Kirk, I don't even know what a dunk tank is.
Yeah, I agree.
Uh, so, back, back to our discussion, GNN, uh, GNN Developments does qualify for this, and it qualifies, um, on its current building, um, uh, the subdivided two parcels will also qualify when buildings are built on those by those folks that have bought the land. So, um, uh, we believe this is, this is totally, uh, it falls within the policy, it falls within everything, and we are happy to recommend that council, um, uh, pass this, uh, pass this tax incentive grant.
All right, any, uh, any discussions, if you have any questions? Not in our bylaw, so, uh, as a parent, can we get a motion to, uh, accept the, uh, approve the, uh?
I'll make that motion.
Tax incentive for 2024 for GNN, okay, there we go, all in favor? Uh, it's Carrie, okay, there we go.
I would like to thank everyone on the council for the help that they give us on this, on this project, it's a little unusual, but, uh, hopefully it'll be great for the town, I hope, also, thanks for having us.
Thank you, Carrie.
Okay, uh, seven point three, uh, AUM and whatever else is there?
AM.
Yeah, we have to get a motion to come off table for that too, Your Worship, for AUM, okay, motion to come off, uh, previous, uh, council meeting, yeah, so, yeah, all in favor?
I think Trace, cause I asked Tracy, I'm like, did we decide, yes, we could go, but, and I believe we did decide, yes, we could go, and I believe Cindy said, we would just have to move money, council would have to decide, and I did, but just as a side note, I kind of figured out what our expenses would be in regards to the conference fees, accommodation and mileage, and we're looking at about, um, seventeen hundred and fifty dollars total, and I saw, like, in the conference fees, there's 4,000 in there, so even if you took, like, the whole seventeen fifty, there'd still be about a thousand dollars left in the conference fees, but that's up to us, I guess, to move that at, whenever it needs to be moved, or, okay.
Yeah, cause you're pretty much, well, mileage and assistance, and I just put through another, um, 300 dollars today, so.
So like if we.
Mileage and assistance is already gonna be over budget.
Yes, so it's like, there is money still available, like, in the conference fees area.
Right, but you have to realize, council, mileage and assistance is already a budget, and it's derived, yes, so we're already gonna be, I bet you, we're gonna be, instead of 3,000, we'll probably be filtered to five or six, if all these meetings keep happening for water.
Yeah, but at what point does something else get in there?
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, water brings us money, so, I, like, I'm just saying that we have to look at that, um, I'm not saying, yeah, but we need to tell there that there's 3,000 in mileage, we're already at 3,000, so extra money in other places probably should go to mileage too, because, like, there's gonna be, right, see, Donna, there's gonna be many more water meetings coming in the next five months, so.
Spelling, yeah.
Yeah, it is, so, I mean, it's up to you guys what you wanna do, but I just keep that in mind too.
I, I know, I know Cory doesn't have any desire to go, and I, I used to say, you can't make it, and I can't make it, so you're, you're looking, when you say 750, what?
Seventeen fifty, that includes the conference fees, the mileage, and our accommodations, which is less than what Cory spent at RMA for two of us, so I mean, realistically, we have a budget for it.
And it's up to you to come, it's up to you guys to pass a motion, we've indicated the, the money and where we need to do.
So right now, there's twenty-five hundred dollars available in training, and there's about seventeen hundred available, or twenty-seven hundred available in conference fees, but your mileage is over, and I'm thinking you probably need another at least 2,000 in mileage, at least.
Well, I think, I think, the first time we went, didn't we, didn't, we said we, we paid the hotel, or no, what did we say the first time, we paid the mileage for that hotel, didn't we pay for hotels the first time?
We, the first time was a schmuzzle, and we almost died on the highways driving there, so then we said after that, it would be approved that we could stay in hotels if we chose to, no one went the second year to Calgary, and then last year for the AMA, Tracy and I went, and then this year, we would like to go, it's in Red Deer, but we have, we're able to get accommodations and give a token of thank you to the person for a hundred bucks to stay, so that's what our comps are costing, is a hundred bucks. Like, we're trying to do our best to keep it inexpensive, so we're able to go because we find value in it, as a council, to be able to get education and to meet in people and such.
We should back.
Yeah, seventeen fifty.
Yeah.
Somebody wanna make the motion? All in favor? Okay, Carrie, all right, okay, was there something else on this one here, or that's, we're, that's it, right?
We also need to get on and do our early bird registration, then otherwise it would cost.
Yeah, cause that's prior to August 16th.
That's your fault.
Was part of needing.
You missed early bird, so it's your fault.
Yeah, cause it's like another 300 or 400 bucks if we didn't.
All right, so, uh, new business, eight point one, bulk water station, request for additional grant money, and say, Donna, you've been talking with Flowmasters and these guys, Flowpoint, so you'll explain.
I'm certainly happy to explain to this, by the way, we've got a heck of a hailstorm coming our way, so it's just, you know, right now.
I'm sure, yeah.
So, closing with, uh, ask for a bit of a recess to.
Yeah, wanna take a recess?
Yeah.
To the window?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Home to the garage?
Yes.
Yes, they go, they go, recess, one bigger, yeah.
Jesse's running home.
Text us when you get there.
Hi, can you do me a favor, and can you move my vehicle into the garage, please?
And mine.
There's a big, well, there's a storm coming, and it's a big hailstorm, and I don't want my vehicle to be hail damaged for the third time.
Good thing I, I didn't.
I have your vehicle with me.
Hey, guys?
Yes, please, like, right soon, ASAP, cause there's a big storm.
Hey, I just wanted to let you know, it's over top of Buckley, created for moment.
Yeah, I know, great, I'll come, thanks, and we're, we're tracking it.
It, we might miss it, but it's hard to say.
I've had to get my car hail damaged fixed twice now already, and it's only six years old, so, three times a charm, maybe.
So looking at, um, our Alberta ladder, the current, you're on SuperNet, it says the SuperNet connects more than thirty-three hundred government services and public institutions, uh, including 300 libraries.
Yeah, this contract, let me.
That was ActiveNet, though.
No, this is SuperNet.
No.
Alberta SuperNet Extended Area Network.
Oh, that's a different thing, and I thought you, cause we signed ActiveNet here.
Yeah, no, no, this is the government thing, way back when, where they connected everybody, nobody had internet in the coun- in the country and all that stuff, but there hasn't been a contract, this is the only contract we've come up with, 2003, and it's expired.
I think it superseded everything, Kelly, have you heard anything about the SuperNet? You tried, you tried to pay for wedding flowers. I hope that makes it accurate.
Um, no.
No, I haven't heard anything about it. Like, is it changing or something, or?
No, we just, you know, how businesses tend to change their names over the years, yes, it started out as SuperNet many years ago.
Yes.
Is it still SuperNet today, or have you heard that name or?
Yeah, I thought, I thought it was like, it's all through wire now, right?
It's Alberta Live, that provides internet services to RCD hospitals, libraries, schools.
But we're, we're now.
Units of all.
We're now, uh, we're, we're not on it at all, because it's now called cyber, right? Could you do me a favor, Counsel Tracy, just talk to the, um, library manager a little bit, just let me.
Yeah, I asked one librarian, cause I knew she would respond quickly, and she wasn't, so I will ask the library.
They're not, I know the library's not on our internet.
Yeah, they're on her own, yeah.
I don't think Ken has, like, Paris Tech has anything to do with it.
No, no, and I just, I wondered because of the, uh, cause of the telepathic, right?
Oh, yeah, they still do, if somebody goes out, they call, they have their own tech that they call.
Just sort of do, okay?
All right, so I call a meeting back to order at 8:05, and our first order of business, we'll go back to eight point one, the bulk water station, say, Donna, go ahead.
Thank you, so, uh, when we came to council the last time, we, we certainly had a figure of, uh, one, three hundred and.
Three fifty.
Three fifty.
Three fifteen.
Three fifteen, which is fine, uh, we had a kickoff meeting with our engineers, with Flowpoint, uh, with Public Works and, and myself, and, uh, as we're going through how this bulk station's gonna be built, how it's gonna be handled, uh, one of the things I said was, uh, and we've been knocking for this Flowpoint for different pricing options, right? Three inch cam locks, two inch cam locks, oh, two overhead arms, et cetera, so when we looked at, uh, when we looked at our options for this. So when we looked at, uh, when we looked at our options for this first time out, uh, we believed that we could put a second overhead arm on that bulk station next year, not this year. So my conversation with, uh, and Andrew's in my conversation with Flowpoint and our engineers was, okay. So typically what municipalities do is they build some, and then they want to add to it, and then it's a mess. Because you got to rip up engineering, you got to rip up a shack, you got to rip up everything, and that costs way more money. So Flowpoint indicated to us, uh, for roughly twenty thousand, and they're pretty confident with their twenty thousand mark, maybe less. But with their twenty thousand mark added to that three fifteen, they can, A, put all the internals in the shack, so it's, uh, so it's that. They can also adjust the shack so it can be, uh, not ripped apart, but it'll have probably proper ports that we can go in and out, so it doesn't destroy, uh, the shack, because those are really nice, we call it shacks, but they're really nice, uh, housing, uh, units for the, for the internals. We also don't have to change engineering because the extra, the extra camlock and everything, and the supports and everything for that arm will be already inside the shack. So if we had to rip it apart, it's probably going to be thirty or forty thousand extra, right, if we don't do it right? So, um, that current design is we have a three-inch overhead arm on one side, on side one, a three-inch camlock, so camlock is what you look into. Water tankers can also put a reducer with two-inch camlock, they hook together with two straps like that, or two, uh, arms. Or like a better word to use, I can't remember what they're called anymore, so the two-inch can be fitted to the three-inch, and they can, they can fill their truck. The other thing we're having is if your quarter inch RV tap on side two. So it's a good marketing place for the lake, you could fill your trailers and, and all that sort of thing with water. Um, and of course, the bulk system will be, of course, no cash, no coin. So it's going to be, um, properly done accounts. And, uh, Flowpoint is a one-time charter, and it's, it's free, they look after us, they troubleshoot for us the whole bit, and we'll go learn how to do this. So what we're, what we're asking, we've had some extensive planning meetings that have agreed this is the most prudent and responsible manner which to prepare for the future and build for current needs as well. Administration recommends a council resolution for an extra twenty thousand from grant, uh, to build to support future expansion prudently and responsibly.
Right, thank you. And just like the other part, this will be covered by the funding by the M S I. We understand, is that right? So you, you would be...
Yeah, it's going to go through the GAP tax, I think, the GAP tax.
Yeah, and it's a capital item, so...
So just waiting for the, the final number to put in the grant.
And it's a capital item, so it doesn't have to, contrary to some of the things that I've been hearing around town, it doesn't need to have a town hall or meeting or anything like that, it's part of our capital budget. Um, I pointed, I can point out a couple of other things, like doing it this way, I was in Ladue today. So Ladue has got the busiest bulk station I've ever seen. They have one arm, they have, uh, bulk water trucks can't go under that, uh, they have to go to the other side. They're lined up ten on one side and another on the other one. I was over at Calmar to see the one that Calmar has now, and it's a single arm, is all I have on one side. I've already heard with numerous farmers that they are very disappointed in the one, uh, with everybody, who they said the waiting time, somebody gets in there, they have to wait, and it's a two or three. So this, uh, this could be a feather in our hat for this one here, you know? And, uh, I know I've had lots of inquiries already about people that just wish we had it go today.
Yeah, well, how much is a dual arm, like, if we get the whole arm?
Oh, we're looking at, uh, seventy thousand.
Seventy thousand?
Yeah.
And that included all the amendments?
Yeah, I think this would be, um, most efficient, like I said, I wish, I wish we had it today. You know, this current situation with the water and, uh, I know that, uh, I, I, I heard from a source that the Warbridge, uh, bulk station was closed for a while, we had some trouble with the wells, I don't know if they still go on, but...
And one of the, one of the things, Your Worship, as part of this grant is that, that's why we haven't put any cost on it, is because under the grant, the government requires us to have signage saying, "In cooperation with who? Part of federal grant," and then, uh, that money will be on the sign.
Yep.
It comes up when, when this grant is approved and when that bulk station is first, uh, is first operable before it pumps its first gallon of water, and we send that off too. So that's why we haven't, uh, A, divulged any, uh, money yet, because we needed this other twenty thousand, but B, as part of these types of grants where the government wants you to put a sign up front, we don't divulge anything until that sign goes up and it's built, and they have, uh, signed off on the grant. Then before that first tanker of water, for our photo op, there'll be a tanker sitting there, the sign will get pounded into the ground, and it will have a photo op sent into the government. So it will, it'll be like you see on the highway signs, right, in cooperation with...
Yeah, federal government.
Yeah.
It'll be the federal government.
It'll be the federal government with this one.
Any other questions? Oh, I need a motion for additional twenty thousand for that, for, uh, for support of future expansion.
I'll make the motion.
On the favor? Ms. Carrie? That's great. Jim? Uh, eight point two, Community Peace Officer, APA Inspector, Ploton.
Hey, Your Worship, uh, uh, the Agricultural Pest Act Inspector was out, uh, looking at Weed Creek. And believe it or not, we have a lovely citizen that's been pulling those noxious yellow or white flowers for years, and they were actually quite surprised it's more under control than it should be. So, which is good, but they also asked, who is our agricultural pest act? It should be our, our peace officer. So they require and provide authority for municipalities to support an inspector to utilize the authority granted under the act to enforce pests and nuisance control within a respective municipality. So, uh, pests can be animal fauna and flora, I guess, right, animal plants or mineral. And we'll continue to leave with Ladue County and the Alberta inspectors, because it's, uh, um, it's just what we do. Following duties are outlined in section six of the Alberta Pest Act Duty Local Authority, identifies the duties to prevent establishment out or to control or destroy pests in the municipality. And, and pest doesn't necessarily mean a skunk and her family underneath your deck, that's not what that means, it could mean rats. Uh, I mean, the rat patrol on the borders of Alberta, they can't catch every one of them, and, uh, and we hope Cindy doesn't bring any from DC. But, uh, uh, those are typical pests, we don't typically destroy, uh, the natural animals that are here. And, uh, section ten of the act, um, the local authority, we have to shout, appoint, I hope to, uh, sufficient number of inspectors to carry out this act and the regulations within. So we're small enough, we only need one. Two or more local authorities may join the appointed inspectors within the municipalities or ensure its agreement for the sharing of the cost of the inspectors. Uh, Council Svenchik is here anyway, uh, there's, Svenchik is here anyway, and, uh, it's, uh, it sounds like we have a ton of pests in Thursby, but hopefully it's for the waterways with, uh, pest influence of flora.
All right, thank you. Okay, questions anyway? All right, can I get a motion to, uh, approve, uh, Community Peace Officer, Dayon... The authority of Pest Inspector for the town of Thursby.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. John, on the favor? That's all, you're going to change his name now.
Well, sometimes we call him Dayon, so, you know.
Man, man, he's a company name.
Um, it just, it just, um, makes sense, because he can look at debt cell disease and control those kinds of things, and...
Yep.
So he's now a pest and a weed inspector, so he's, okay?
Eight point three, Chamber Commerce Community Grant Application, I think we've been all through that.
Make the motion to grant them the five hundred dollars, yeah.
And Sean, on the favor? That is Carrie. All right, so, uh, we aren't doing anything under nine anymore, that's all done, right?
That is correct, Your Worship.
Okay, so we'll all go right to the, uh, council reports. I guess I'll start it off on my head, if I can get here. All right, for the month of June and July, actually, part of July, there wasn't much in July, but, uh, June eleventh, we have our special council meeting, uh, and I can qualify the council as a whole. The nineteenth, I attended the State of the County of Ladue meeting at Redtail Land Museum with Say Don, and, uh, listened to what the County of Ladue has done in, you know, last year and what they're planning, and, uh, it was pretty much short and sweet, about an hour, lunch, and then maybe an hour and a half, and, uh, Mayor Michael said some things, and, uh, that was, you know, it was on I O P on me, that's really good, all I can say, I'm really good at that. Um, June twenty-second, representative of the town at, uh, Water Free for Heritage Day, you know, with Council Gilbert, and it's still sun, went very good, had a lot of comments from everybody that they were very happy to be just in here. It's good, really good. Uh, twenty-fourth, I attended the Water Session in Say Donna, Council Gilbert, legal and some interest parties, and, uh, we'll probably talk about that in, uh, in Canada later on. Uh, June twenty-fifth, regular council meeting, June twenty-sixth, I attended the Northern Saskatchewan Waterlands General Meeting. This is something that, you know, previous councils on, and, and, you know, we, we're a big part of the North Saskatchewan River, and, uh, I've attended a couple of meetings now, and, uh, so I let my stand, name stand for a position on the board. There were seven candidates and two positions available. Probably shouldn't say it this way, but there was, uh, half, half, half the room was, uh, full of women, and there was one woman candidate, and she got all the votes. She got all the votes, so then...
Half the room was men, though.
True enough, but there were six men, there were six men and one woman on the, on the, uh, the set, is what I'm saying.
Well, you need to have one.
So anyhow, she, uh, she got in by last night, and, uh, I got tied for second, and then they did a ballot, and I was tied again, and then they did a, uh, one of the board members, uh, voted, and, uh, so I lost on the fine account, but, uh, it was, uh, it's interesting, they have a lot of projects, they have a lot of money. A lot of it donated through, uh, F Corps and, uh, the government, and, uh, they've got some really worthwhile projects, and it's, 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 I think it's very worthwhile to know what's going on over those people. And then July twenty-third, I had the regular council meeting. Any questions about that? Thank you. Uh, Gilbert's on air, John, you have anything?
Uh, just, it means I've attended, I've been here for a little bit.
Thank you. Uh, John Servus?
For the month of June, please find the following activities. I attended all regularly scheduled meetings for the month of June, with the exception of the June eleventh Cow meeting. June fourth was a library meeting, I was acting secretary for the meeting. Programs continue to be successful, Maker Space is available for crafting, library is closing at six P M. On Thursdays during summer, summer reading program is underway, brochures have been distributed to various schools. English Conversation and More Group shall continue throughout the summer. June fifth, attended the T and Vannock with Cynthia Martell, Creating Hope Society. June tenth, Communities in Bloom Meeting. June eleventh, attended the Mayfield End Dinner Theater with seniors. June thirteenth, volunteered, uh, Lampart Hall to do a barbecue and set up tables and chairs and serve food for Ladue County. June sixteenth, seventeenth, and nineteenth, I did Commissioner of Oats. June twentieth, I was Bingo Paymaster. June twenty-fourth, I was Commissioner of Oats again. June twenty-fifth, uh, was council meeting, I attended the kindergarten graduation that day, and I did not attend the Chamber of Commerce meeting as it conflicted with council meeting. And June twenty-sixth, attended the seniors' potluck meeting and farewell to Eunice Gillis, and I attended Thursby Elementary School Awards Ceremony.
Any questions? Oh, shall we, Council Rose?
I'm up, all right, so for the month of June, um, attended the regular Cow and regular council meeting. On June fourth, we had our library board meeting, which of course Tracy spoke of. Um, we're just currently looking at the policies and going through those. And then we were to have another, um, plant session on Friday, was it this Friday, right? But it was bumped, it was bumped because of the weather, so they're gonna put that off. But those sessions have been really well attended and, um, really interesting because we're doing plants in the area and things that you can do with them. On June seventeenth, I had my F C S S meeting. I think Michaela talks a lot about the stuff I'm going to say. Um, there was the volunteer appreciation, which one hundred and forty-eight people attended with, um, excellent entertainment. And then we also had the seniors appreciation, which had one hundred and forty-three seniors, and, um, the meal was catered by Esso. The community awareness, question mark? Um, I was told at that meeting that it was going to be at the back-to-school barbecue, but then I saw it was going to be at the Thor thing, so I'm not really sure where it's going to be or what's going on on that front. Another thing that was brought up at the F C S S meeting was our Mom and Tots program is being put on hold just due to the lack of want, need. So, um, Michaela wants input on, um, trying to redump it for the community and what the needs are. So we want to try to just put it out to people for suggestions, um, what they think would be better, or, I don't know, what we feel is needed in our community. Um, we're also looking for another name for Welcome Wagon Bags, just because that's kind of old school. So we're throwing it out there as well to find another name for that. Um, our student, um, F C S S member is looking at doing a town map for us with all the businesses on that. And then, um, Michaela's looking at trying to do an event, um, because February, of course, um, at the end of February is anti-bullying, and she wants to do a community event for February, do a kindness community event. So that's something we're looking at for February to try to get all of our town, um, involved in. On June twenty-seventh, I was Bingo Paymaster, and then we're off for the summer, thank you. And then June, um, twenty-ninth and thirtieth, um, Councilor Muston and I attended, um, the Pigeon Lake Music Festival. And that was June.
Jim?
I have an idea for the name or for the Welcome Wagon. Bag of Connections. Bag of Connections. Bag of Connections.
Any questions?
We're on Connections.
All right, I need a motion to accept the council reports for information.
Make the motion to accept the council board's information.
John, on the favor? All right. Uh, eight point six. Jim?
Uh, thank you, Your Worship, so, month of June, uh, we've been working with our planner list to, uh, for the public meeting for the G M subdivision, such for the bio amendments for the property to be discussed, and it's a great, uh, a great start for council to get their feet wet about subdivision, and as we grow and get more income and so forth, we can anticipate probably some more of this, so it's good. All amendments with spot logic, lease and subsequent council understanding and signage have been done. I worked with the high school, they request to assist a student on a confidential matter, so that was, uh, I got called by the principal, so that was, uh, that was handled. Dumpster dive day was a huge success with over seventy properties registering, and the contracting team will accommodate everyone, packed the bin successfully, and they'll coordinate our event again, uh, next year. Uh, we've done this and made this past year and, uh, in the past, this year mid-June, and we'll continue to hold it mid-June for twenty twenty-five. As well, thanks to the County of Ladue for assisting us with their transfer station information. Uh, Public Works and King Marine to find a solution to the wells at the river wind intake. Uh, we have a, uh, wet well and a dry well, and Andrew, I know you're on the phone, if I, if I mess this up, please jump in. Um, but basically, um, uh, King sent us a, uh, King Marine sent us a June third, uh, document that, uh, of course, we attempted to remove the standing water in the wet well. Unfortunately, the back trucks could not vacuum the water due to high suction head, too much distance from the water line to the floor. So Andrew and, uh, King Marine have had a chat, and, uh, we think a six-inch diesel drive pump would be more effective and worth a try. And with that said, we also tried to close the main river water intake valve to isolate the wet well from the river, and it failed as usual. So we, uh, we believe this is mainly due to the sediment level in the valve. See, when Imperial was using those pumps, they had two pumps going full bore all the time, so you wouldn't catch that sediment in either, in that wet well, right? It would be constantly blown out. But, uh, it hasn't been done in a very long time, and with only one river pump running at very substandard speeds, it doesn't clean that out. So, um, the diesel pump may be able to remove the sediment from the valve with personnel operating at the end of the hose. So we're, we're looking at a, a solution to get down in there enough to, to look after that valve. Have I missed anything, Andrew?
Hang on, sorry, I just had to unmute myself. Um, yeah, so, uh, I, I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with this wet well. Um, it's forty foot down in the ground. So our, our issues that we've been having with, uh, with trying to get this sediment out of there is we got to get the water out first. Um, without getting the, with us not being able to get the water out because of there, there being such a distance that it's going to travel to the surface for the pumps, it makes it so we can't get the sediment out. Um, so we have to find a way of getting the sediment out of the way of the, um, the knife valve that's down there and figure out if we can repair... So we have to find a way of getting the sediment out of the way of the, the knife valve that's down there and figure out if we can repair it in place or if it's something that we have to figure out a different way of preventing the water from coming into that wet well, so. Like it's, normally it's pretty simple to get that water out just by simply dropping a submersible pump in, but a submersible pump won't keep up to the amount of flow that's able to come in, so we have to get the flow to stop coming in in order to get that, get that water out.
So we're working on a, we're working on a solution. We hope we have one pretty soon. I know King Marine's working with Andrew on a solution, but we can't put our new pumps down that forty-five foot well. We can't put a new hundred or eighty thousand or hundred thousand dollar pump down there without that being cleaned up, otherwise we're just wasting time and money. And the two pumps that we have there now pretty much died fifteen years ahead of schedule. So we're, we're really careful. So we're working on solutions. We'll update you as, as we have something. It's not an easy, it's not an easy thing to change a valve that far down in water. It's not an easy situation. That's happening there. Thank you for that, Andrew. Worked with the pastor, New Life Church, and their permitting and support services for the block party, great success. And many youth there that volunteered their time to assist, which was very cool. But these young future volunteers have made the event an even greater success. All had a great time and we have some young volunteers have asked to help, asked us if they can help set up stuff and do stuff, so it's, it's pretty cool. Provided a farm permit to the industrial park during the appropriate weather conditions during all the rain and delivered the permit personally to meet the team at the business. That's a tank farm at the end, the chemical tank farm. Replied to Alberta environment regarding their queries regarding drone control, production of our water, just a standard update and worked with DABR Utilities Manager to affect the response. Working with Fortis Alberta for quotes on pole removal permitting for the bulk water station. That's all been done and that pole will be removed soon. Their quote was incredibly reasonable, eleven hundred dollars. Couldn't believe it. It was awesome. Electronic sign is up. Will we use the flagship for training once the power is in and the quote is accounted for? We know Jerry Bassett's quote is gonna be about forty-two hundred to put the power there. I'm waiting for Fortis to tell me if we need a new transformer, if we need something, and we have to have internet to have sign.
How do you do that?
Well, we're working with TELUS somehow, cause I didn't think a house is gonna work because it's not gonna be working the cold unless you have a heated shack for it.
So you can't even go around one or do anything without internet?
No, it's just sitting there.
Well, how does Kelmar's operate? Is there an internet shop?
Internet.
But it's, it's close enough maybe to the town.
Yeah, they've probably got an underground connection. We'd have to get.
We have to have an ethernet connection.
You're looking at a hundred and fifty dollars or something.
Oh, it's gonna stop sign that's gonna bring us in zero revenue. It's going to cost us four grand a year.
Yep.
We should have sold it when we had the chance. Cause it's gonna do nothing better than what the signs we have now and will be taking away income from the ground class because now they're not giving our sign. Unless we.
Well, we'll still continue.
With that one on here, but yeah.
It looks nice.
Yeah, but it's cheap, but.
Totally a red elephant, red here. So depends on what Fortis tells us to do. The power poles are there, but that's a, that's a false lead, right? Because you don't know if you need a different transformer, you don't know what you need and Blanchett assents their power department for this, so I'm just waiting for this.
I mean, these problems would have been there no matter where we put their original values or whatever.
It would have been worse where the sign was originally gonna go. Would have been worse.
I see at Kelmar, you need a standing there, you need a head. And I don't know what the internet part of it. I would estimate it's the same.
Well, the internet would either have to come underground like the TELUS, fiber optics, or you have to have some sort of shack that's heated there for a router, cause it can't be out, outside and then that's gonna get broken into and somebody's, you know, like. So anyways, we'll, we'll see. We gotta, we gotta TELUS come back to us with what their cost is. I don't, or sorry, TELUS ads for us, don't know what that's gonna be. I'm hoping the Fortis will say, yeah, just tell your electrician to do this and this and this off this pole, but it's sorely. So I'm not, I'm not thinking. It's just, it's just very sad, to be quite honest with you. It's very sad. This is just a big white elephant. Attended the FCSS meeting, provided clarity to the advisory, to their roles of community eyes and ears and not required to set up events unless they wish to. So it was a, it was a nice, a nice way to, to say to our advisory board that we need their brains and their thoughts and, and all their ideas. So it's not a required necessity to set up events and do all that sort of stuff. They have an open invitation to help if they so choose, but advisory boards aren't typically asked to do that. So that's my June in a nutshell. July in a nutshell, sorry.
It's not yet.
So the boulevard, what's going on with, we, we budgeted to do that, right?
Yes, we did.
So what's going on there?
We are not gonna look at doing it. I mentioned last council meeting, we're not gonna do it till about October. All that has to be scraped up. We'll put in new loan in October, then it can freeze. There's no point putting it in now because people are just gonna wreck it. And then we'll find the right variety to seed it in the spring in 2025 of either ground clover or some kind of ground cover that won't grow over the top of it. But we'll stay, we have to leave it about an inch underneath. Alex Bowman's gonna take all the rocks and all that. He's just gonna take them with him and we'll get all that stuff out of there, but that won't happen till October.
I thought we decided on what we were seeding there.
We just have to make sure it's the right stuff and it's the salt stuff.
Salt from the snow doesn't hurt it. We, we know we're seeding. We just have to make sure it's the right variety.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. And then a flowering something or a grass?
Yeah, no, it'll be flowering clover or a little time or.
Time, purple, right, or something?
Yeah, we just don't know if it goes down the salt from the snow, so we're just checking into the proper varieties.
Marcus Corey knew everything about it.
In his backyard.
I don't know.
Why would we get salt flush?
It's unfortunate that concrete was taken out, it really is. I was in Wataus on, on Monday and when you come, you know, when you come to Wataus and then the lights there and then the golf course and then you get into downtown, so they got a whole boulevard there. And it's never looked nice. They have, they have, it's all concrete and they have a pink platter with flowers similar to ours. And then they have a tree and they just have a little cutter on the tree and it's concrete again and it repeats itself about fifteen or twenty times. So if you're going through there, you have a look at it and you, and you can see how maintenance free that, that is.
We've got about three or four or five trees to take out of there, too. We're not gonna disturb the, the tree borders that are there because that would be a nightmare because they're very expensive. I, I, I don't know who decided to take the boulevard apart and I don't care.
As, as it turns out right now, I mean, if you were flat and saw it in there, you'd be in a world of hurt, you know, with this heat wave and stuff.
Well, and even the maintenance on that, you still have to have somebody to get it.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
And then there's so.
I don't like it any more than anybody else, but I didn't do it, but I will try to.
And then my confusion on the community awareness, what's going on with that, Tom? Like, is it going to be at the school barbecue? Are we not doing an event now? Is Michaela just giving out info bags of these events?
No, she's apparently, from what I know, the Spirit of Thursby wanted her to come and set up a tent from the town and do it there. That's part of the community awareness, according to what Shana wants to do. We're fine with that. She'll be there.
And she's still gonna do the barbecue at the school thing?
I don't know. I can get back to you on that.
Okay, okay. And then my other question was, when is our technology working?
Tim's on holiday.
Tim's on holiday.
So how long has this been now?
Well, it's been, wait, we're in the license server room, so we got those fixed. And then now Tim's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, Tim's on holiday.
But this has been like months, right? Like what is, what?
It is terrible. Harry Bassett was gone.
Yeah. Oh, January.
January, he got back one.
February.
Close to March, in March.
And then we had to schedule Tim out and then Tim had to look at it and we had to have Andrew there. We had to go through the different options and the pricing options. And then now Tim has to get back and then we have to work on quotes.
What's the problem, though? Like, it worked and then now it doesn't?
We didn't really know.
We have a faulty connector in the wall.
Somewhere.
So what needs to happen is Tim is gonna have to go into the wall, like where initially the opening is down by Donut's chair. He's gonna have to go into the wall and essentially replace a section of cord in there. The, the big thing was, did we wanna do the big expensive fix where we hook everything up and then have it here where the cords connect to my computer here? Just to be able to get it on the TV? Or do we want to do a slightly less expensive, almost kind of Band-Aid fix and let us use it for the time being? And then maybe look towards larger council chamber solutions, but more problems, I think, that we have than just the TV itself. So are we saving, are we doing the big fix and saving money or, or are we saving money to do a bigger, bigger fix, right? Like, where do we want that money to go? So we sort of talked and decided between Tim and Andrew and I that we're gonna go for the Band-Aid fix. We're gonna save that money. We're gonna get it working and then we'll look at a larger.
Big picture?
Yes, big picture, because we have a much bigger picture than just the TV. So we may as well save that money here and then put it towards the big picture.
And then the MGA media bill, the twenty twenty, they may want us, they may force us to do that.
Yep. We have no money. We have no choice, but we're gonna wear chrome in the wall. I would need to have to take out the wall to find it. Go ahead, Andrew, sorry.
Very sorry to, sorry to cut in. One of the other things that, that our IT company had mentioned to us was that because of the amount of program, different programs that were being used, when the initial system was being built, it was trying to allow all of those to access at the same time. So like Google Chrome and the one for iPads as well. So that, the system is definitely outdated, quite drastically, actually. It was, wasn't the most up-to-date system to start with when it was initially installed either.
And so, yeah, it, he said it was seven, I think, almost eight years old, the entire setup, the back system, everything we don't see in the walls. Our phones are only made to last about three years before, and that's a whole bigger thing. But if you think about how, you know, IT companies, or not IT companies, but tech companies make our phones only to last three years, we can imagine how outdated everything is that we can't see.
And you think the wire is through the wall? Because that would create possibly up through the ceiling and then drop down.
It's wall and ceiling. It's a combination.
Yeah, but.
You've got an outlet here and it goes right down the wall and they come up that way over there and across, so it's gonna be a combination. You don't really wanna rip the walls open.
Well, that's where I think it would go straight up to the ceiling and through.
Well, but it comes in the back of the.
The TVs.
It comes in the back of the TVs.
So it goes down through the walls on both sides. So it probably goes up there to that wall and up and over and down into this one, but it's still in the wall.
Yeah, yeah. Any electrician love DVD.
Yeah, it has to rip apart a wall.
I watched them put in my satellite wires when I had satellite. It was easy TV fishing, just put a wire up there.
Did you guys have power outage today?
No.
I had two yesterday.
Yeah, what's going on? I was told we should ask our Fortis rep to come in and talk to us, cause I've been hearing there's lots of power outages all over the place in our area.
I thought that sign was running. I thought that was what brought the power.
Can I step in on that one with the power outage? Okay, so it was, everything north of the railroad tracks was affected by that power outage today. It actually wasn't the south side. And a lot of the power outages that are happening right now are due to the heat. When you get this amount of heat and you get the dust floating through the air a lot and it sits on those lines, it'll actually ca, create a current that'll, on the top of the line, that'll cause the breakers to go off on the, on the power poles themselves.
Well, I assumed it was because of the heat, but that's terrifying because it's just gonna get hotter and hotter.
That's right. That's right. There's a.
As time goes on, it's gonna get hotter and hotter and longer and longer and we can't sustain that now. Like, that's great.
I know the fire department has been out quite frequently for birds and squirrels that have popped the breakers on the power poles.
You look at that transformer field, for example, there was a little while ago, just trying to think, probably eight months ago, I was talking to someone whose, whose brother is a lineman and in the heat, it could have been last year, but it doesn't matter. Anyway, what happened when he was coming off the bucket truck? The line caused a, a power, like an electrical grid around it and it caused a heart attack. It caused him to have a heart attack inside the bucket. That's how strong those force fields are and it was, and it was in the heat, pantomime. So they got him to the ground and managed to resuscitate him. Fortunately, there was a medic on, one of the guys was a medic, but he died three times on the way to the hospital. And fortunately, he's alive. He's gonna have a heart condition to rest. It was likely, it's a quite a powerful force field, so that's. If we went underground, we probably would have a problem.
Alright, anything else? Alright, so eleven point seven, so I, I guess we're not having a separate one for the staple now. We're just gonna put our administration. It's fine. I just found your format there. I was just wondering.
That's okay.
Okay, go ahead, there is a.
I submitted the audit direct schedule and budget for Liddoo County. I worked with the auditors on the LAPP audit and now all five years are done and submitted to LAPP. Meetings with residents for improper taxes, export software, export software for meter reads compatible with the new meters. Um, process of payroll, payroll, meeting three bulk water stations, finalized reserve policy, meetings with public works regarding meter installs and we had one shut off in the month of June. Outstanding utilities, seventy-eight thousand three hundred and seventy-six twenty-three, of which six thousand is subject to shut off. Outstanding taxes, five hundred and twenty-six thousand eight hundred and fifty-five thirty-six, of which sixty thousand is up for tax recovery and seventy-one is from 2023 taxes. Operating accounts, two forty-eight, one seventy-nine eighty-three compared to seven eighty-six, two thirty eighty-one. The big difference is we spent a lot of money on capital and we haven't got the grants yet, so. Savings accounts, one point four million compared to one point three last year and our line of credit is back at zero.
Thank you. Any questions?
So when we look at the variances, all the county stuff, we're just waiting now that the audited.
Well, that's not even in this, except last year.
So when do we get the money for this year?
We'll get half of it and they're going to budget, or they're going to council in August.
Should I wait till Andrew's or should I ask you how are the meter installs going?
Well, we're running into problems with plumbing plumbers because they're, they soldered. Andrew, you can talk to it, but they soldered some stuff and it can't be soldered and so people have to hire plumbers to get it fixed so that we can install meters, so.
So the residents have to pay to do that?
Yeah.
So people have to be like, screwed, I don't want it.
No, we're waiting for some information back.
We're waiting for permission back, permission back for legal. I don't think they can refuse. Pretty confident they can't, but we're just waiting for that, that back from legal.
But they were chugging along pretty good there and then they come across a bunch that have this problem, so.
They're old places.
Yeah, it can be old meters, yeah.
Like just old. Even Andrew said he doesn't know who did the plumbing in this town, but it's like they just soldered stuff together and they can't get it apart and they're not plumbers, so they just, they can't start ripping stuff apart, right?
But people are cooperative. They're, they're, you know, we haven't had any complaints or anything, so that's a good news.
Alright, eleven point eight, County Peace Officer report. See you, Don, if you want to cross the goal with that.
Yeah, for sure. It's, CPO Fetiche is busy with unsightly. You're gonna notice very soon in the industrial area, all those lots will be mowed. On the eighth of August, the ones that aren't complying will be mowed for them. Artic Spas and the Chemical Company are banding together and they're gonna get, they've got a rough cut over to come in and they're doing their own lots. And so also Ray Agro or they've amalgamated with another company. Anyways, they're doing their lots. We, we cannot have a town from a highway where those lots are terrible. There's lots of toxic weeds and everything there, so they'll be all cut down. They only have to do it once a year, we don't know, but we're expressing probably there's gonna be a few car wrecks on the highway as they drive by and look and go, what happened in there? Cause it's gonna be a bit of a shock, but that's all been cleaned up and there's been no real pushback. Dan is very good with what he does and he is, his service levels from us have been, we want voluntary compliance as much as we can. And people are doing a great job and they're. Uh, and people are doing a great job and they're, they're responding positively to him. So basically, you can tell by his stats, you know, some are up and some are down, just depends on the year. But, uh, he is, uh, he's also, uh, been very, um, they're starting to trust him and call him out on more supports for them. And all he has to do is get on the radio, they're right there for him, so, uh, which is good. So basically, you know, sixty-seven in May, um, uh, June, uh, no, June, I don't have June, but that's okay. He's on all of these right now. So year-to-date, three hundred and twenty-seven calls for Little Thorsby, so it's all been good. Thank you. All right, questions, eleven point nine, Public Works, Andrew, were you still on there?
Yeah, I'm still here.
Hey, go ahead, sir.
All right, perfect. I just gotta wait for her to pull it up, cause I'm on, I'm on my phone, my laptop, decided to reboot. Um, okay, uh, you guys will have to bear with me, uh, with this heat and the amount of things that we've had going on. I actually rewrote this like three times, cause I forgot what month we were in. Um, so I attended meetings in regarding to the bulk water fill station. Um, uh, both, uh, with, uh, Fortis and with our engineer and our, uh, water treatment manager, Dave. Um, started hiring the summer students. I now currently have, uh, four summer students. Um, one specific for the rec center and then three others that are helping out around town. Um, with that, we started lawn maintenance around town. Uh, at this point in time, we're not mowing very often, cause the grass is not growing and we don't want it to burn. Um, we're finding that it's only in the shaded areas that the grass tends to grow, so we're trying to keep that under wraps. Uh, keep, keep that down. Um, worked with, uh, uh, our diver, Scott, uh, King Marine, uh, cleaning out the river intake. Um, hopefully, we can come up with a definitive answer on the best course of action. Um, uh, attended a couple of meetings regarding water in general. Um, guys continue working on the install of the water meters and endpoints. Um, as Cindy was mentioning, we're, uh, part of the issue that we have right now is that the water meters throughout town aren't consistent, are consistent. Uh, so some of them are five eights, some of them are three quarters, some of them are half inch. Um, we're now specifically going with a three-quarter inch water meter. Um, and we're starting to find a lot of residents that their water lines into their house aren't up to code, like they should be, uh, based on the years that they were built. So unfortunately, uh, homeowners will have to have a plumber come in and, and adjust it appropriately. And then we can install their new water meter for them and, and endpoint. Uh, we had to bring our Chevy service truck in for repair. Um, it's getting old and we, uh, we blew a CV axle on it, even though we were never using the four-wheel drive. Um, other than that, it's, uh, uh, day-to-day stuff, trying to keep the town up and running and the best of our ability and take care of the issues as they pop up in between all the other work that we're doing.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yep.
Andrew, the, uh, students that you've hired, if they're not cutting grass, are they working full hours?
Yes, uh, for the most part, they are still working full hours. Um, we've been, we're trying to take care of, uh, things like, um, like today, we were down at the, uh, storm ditch, trying to clear that out. Um, eh, hopefully, we do get some rain and I'd like to have that so it flows freely. Um, we've had a few other small projects, uh, I've been getting them to work on a little bit of painting, um, uh, staining some gazebos and, and picnic tables and stuff like that.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Andrew. Uh, Harson, that guy, Kelly, thank you for waiting patiently.
Thanks, Quikwood.
Maybe a pager or something, so you don't have to sit through it all.
Uh, okay, so I just kinda combined some June, some July in mind and then probably do the same in August, kinda wrap up the summer stuff. Um, our active memberships in June were eighty-three, so they were still going pretty strong, but things have slowed down for sure this summer. Especially the heat, it's a huge deterrent because it's literally like doing hot yoga back there in that gym. So it's, it's very, very hot. Um, June fourteenth, fourth and eighteenth, I wrapped up the training and got my certification for the community health wish program. At the, the Alberta Health Services Program that the Duke County is hosting, so I've been working on that since January. Um, in June, we hosted multiple year-end field trips for the first elementary school, which was kinda amazing to see them coming back. We had only six, there's seven different classes come over, um, which they haven't been utilizing our facility. So we appreciate them coming and getting in the door again. Uh, summer programs are going crazy. Uh, Tam is really, is just doing an absolute amazing job. In the first two weeks of our summer program, she had over two hundred and fifty participants in the program, which is like, it's crazy. Like, we had to, our last, this doesn't even include our last field trip that we did. And we capped them at thirty kids and we actually ended up bringing forty-five kids to that field trip, cause the demand was so high. So she pulled in moms, um, that would volunteer and we pulled in some high schoolers that would volunteer as well and go on the trip just to keep our ratios going, but yeah, she's doing a really great job with that. Um, we also have a teacher from, uh, Calmar Secondary School that's done, developed a basketball program. And he's running it out of our facility. So he did the first camp during the heat wave, you know, um, the first start of the heat wave. And he's, but he had great attendance, uh, really good feedback that I checked in with our local parents that, uh, had their kids attended. And so he's actually going to be running another one before, uh, school starts up. Uh, I've had a couple of meetings actually with the organizers with the gravel cycling event, just going over logistics event, which is fine. Um, Dayon has also been, uh, meeting with them on the legal side of things. Everything is moving ahead great. They have portions from Alberta Transportation in place. Um, everything is good. The only thing that right now would be heat or the smoke. So if the, when the event hits eight for the event, that will shut the event down.
When is it, August twelfth?
Seventeenth. Um, they have scaled it back a bit, cause we, they weren't successful in program funding, but it, um, but the, it's still going to be like a huge thing on the Saturday and, and whatnot, so. And their registration numbers are going really good. Um, June tenth and twenty-sixth, so we had, uh, lawn and equate out at our facility, um, working on the sound system. So that would be, that was a project with minor hockey where we did the whole arena system. And then, um, they funded that portion and then we added in, tied into that same system for our lobby and our weight room and our bowling. The sound is unreal, like you could host a concert in that arena or like a dance or something like that. The sound is insane. Um, everything is governed and controlled in a locked box, so hockey parents and students that go and, you know, wanna do shini, they can't wreck anything. It's all locked off and governed. And anybody can Bluetooth into the arena sound system, like if we have it on. Um, it's really neat, so like you don't have to actually be in the time box to run the sound system. The parent can sit and stand and be playing the music for the hockey games and whatnot, yeah. Yeah, so there's a couple of little components that we're waiting on and I just spoke with them today. Hopefully, early next week, we'll have it hundred percent wrapped up and then you'll walk into the lobby, you can hear the tune is driven and the weight room will have some nice music playing in there, pretty quiet. Um, June sixth, so we had, we've had, over like the last two years, we've had constant, um, gas smell in the concession. And we've had the gas company, we've had plumbing go and inspect everything. I've never been able to get a commercial appliance person out and we finally got one out. And the stove that was installed was actually looking at regulator, which it has to have a regulator. So if the pilot goes out, it shuts off the gas. Um, so what was happening is the pressure that was actually coming out of the gas line was way above the, uh, the safe limit. And then it was blowing out the pilot and then just pumping the gas. And so we've got, there's a regulator on it. He was actually, um, uh, there's a control, like internal controls in the stove and the oven themselves that he was able to adjust and get everything working good, so. And then a couple of the minor repairs, so he was out, so, but everything is common in there, so it's, uh, it's going good. Um, they also, like, we're, we're trying to get rid of the double flooding Pepsi cooler fridge that's in that, um, that's in the concession, because they have a deal with Coke and we were able to bring in a brand new fridge. Um, the person that, I just posted it for free and I did have lots of people respond. Um, somebody local came and was going to take it and now realized it's too big. So it's, you know, I heard there might be a hall looking for one. Do you know, have you heard of strawberry Hall looking for it?
Like that's Cindy. Cindy Miller would be a good.
Sure. Cindy Miller would be, okay, so she was, yes, she didn't even reach out to me about it at all.
Ah.
So then they're probably not, yeah. So it's probably gonna, you'll probably see it up on my post, so if you have an idea or know anything, just let me know. Um, I have, I have had it serviced within the last two years, so, but it is an old fridge, so.
Okay.
You've had very few bites set, sorry. You've had very few bites set free or?
No, we did have actually quite a few. We did have quite a few, but it was like.
Worth us asking a hundred bucks or two hundred bucks or?
I, it's more of a headache of getting it out of there and I, there's no guarantee once you move it.
It'll work.
That it's going to work, right? It is so, so, I don't know if it's.
All right.
I would, it's like the free labor of getting it out. And we don't have to put it on public works, cause I need to get it out of there, cause it's taking up, it's a valuable real estate for the concession curve, so.
And the cooler you got from Coke, if that contract ended, does the cooler stay?
No, that, that is tied to the concession contractor. So if they left, yes, we would lose that, but another contractor could bring in it or you could bring in another cooler, right? This one is honestly, it's probably thirty years old, right?
Yeah, you really wanna display a vendor's stuff and not bring in the cooler. That's, that's what you wanna strive?
Yeah.
No matter who's in the concession, right?
Yeah, we did remove the two old Coke vending machines that we had in the arena side. Um, those were archaic and problematic and they actually were tied to the previous concession vendors. And so I didn't wanna operate them because I don't know if they still have heat at all. Coke did look at them and like, whoa, those are ancient, so they actually picked them up and took them over there. Um, we're putting in a Howie's hockey vending machine there, which won't, no, like, hockey taste and, and I'm not doing it, we're about doing it. We don't want the headache of it, so. Um, I also did meet with L P H today, the owner of L P H, just to look at, um, air conditioning into the facility. Obviously, putting it into the facility is non-negotiable, like it, that no way we will ever be able to afford that. We'd be looking at like a hundred plus just to do the seal house side. But there are some, um, affordable options for the weight room and he also did go into the library. So if we wanted to look at having a community space that was air-conditioned and available for people, right? During stuff like this, that would probably be the logical place to put it because it's a contained space. So I'll bring that coffee back to town, though, and, uh, and I have some ideas to find out, so don't worry.
Kelly, well, at least here, we may as well look at water treatment plant, because Dave has no, uh, air conditioning at all in the top office. Okay, good.
Yeah, he did go over to water, and you, um, met him here. Look at the AC here, that cannot be moved over, only with the water treatment. Um, so basically the same idea, what, something, I can't remember what it's called. But it's basically like standalone units that, um.
Yeah, they just kind of out the window, yeah, yeah.
Um.
They're better units, though.
Yeah, like not like the portable.
No, no.
Why you built a twelve million dollar facility and not?
No air conditioning, no fresh.
It's only a summer issue and they built it as a hockey arena. She's not talking about the water. Oh, water, oh, yeah, sorry, yeah.
And no fire, there's no fire.
No fire suppression in it.
And no water treatment plant?
Nope.
Yeah. Yeah. There's just lots of water there.
Thank you, we just, I just, the caterers, oh, they're open until what, nine to two or something? Is that, that gonna be?
The concession?
Yeah, concession.
Right now, cause it's summer, um, they don't have set hours at all. So they're opening for events and stuff as they can or as we request it. Um, come the fall, once we start hockey season, it'll be regular hours, so.
I guess, I thought I saw it.
Yeah. Yeah, no, we had, uh, we did, I guess I could have recorded that in my, uh, report, sorry. Um, we ran baseball playoffs for, for minor ball for two or three weekends. And then the concession was able to open up as much as they could to support, so. Oh, yeah, we did two, sorry, we did two for Thorsey, we did one for the Duke Minor Baseball, cause they couldn't get time in the Duke. And then the concession supported that, so, yeah, so then we were advertising it on Facebook, like, going down China. Amazing food, they did.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Thanks, Kelly. Uh, eleven point eleven, FCS quarter report. And just real, with quick, your worship of council, uh, Michaela has now, uh, received certified rural mental health animator. She got, uh, she got her debrief, she got her certification, so, uh, we'll be, uh, looking to her to, uh, to help us with some stuff. And then she's been busy with accounting the Duke and, of course, advisory board meeting, uh, multi-municipal meeting on June nineteenth. And of course, her animator training, debrief, what they do is indicate what you're good at, what, what happened, what would you like to do, that sort of thing. And, uh, she's had seven clients for information, referrals, five walk-ins and four booked this month. And she's now located in the back boardroom. All right. Thank you. Where Christine's office used to be. And that is now a boardroom, it will be, but she's in, she's quite happy to come back there and.
Okay, got it.
Looks nice in there, yeah. Stuff's been, closet or anything, right? Uh, eleven twelve, uh, very much important.
Um, all right, so we are at sixty-eight percent of revenue and forty, forty-two percent of expenses, so we're doing okay. Um, the biggest difference in revenue, I guess, would be, like, if you look at the, compared to last year, the, um, I didn't have the grants from the government, from the government, from the county. I had at the bottom of the budget, not in the budget, so that's why last year we were fifty-two percent of income for general services. And this year we're only at four, because that big grant wasn't in there, so. I had it in a different place.
What's the highlighted stuff?
Where?
Like in the?
Oh, in the detail stuff?
Yeah.
Oh, that's from just when I did the budget. That's just when we were making changes to the budget, I just didn't have the highlights. The variance report.
So you're not alerting us to the?
No, no, I just changed when I, from when we did regular budget to spring, we got the actual, that's all. Okay, those were just, yeah, I didn't, um, highlight.
You, you don't need a separate, uh, one, but the, um, motion to approve all these for information, so. All right, any questions for Cindy? No? Not, can I get a motion to accept all the administration exports for information? How many comments do you all favor? That is carried. All right, uh, correspondence of black gold, I think it's pretty self-explanatory unless anybody has any questions about it. We'll just accept it for information, okay? Motion for that?
All right, motion for information.
John, all favor, carry. All right, um, you guys wanna take a break or you wanna go right into counter? You can, well, three minutes.
I think it did ran.
Okay, uh, motion to take recess. Nine five, all favor.
Yeah.
Take care.
Ryan, sure. This is going on up to the big nail? Oh, that's a little large, yeah.